Eddie.
All right. Good evening, friends and neighbors and members of the state and community. It is the seventeenth of May in the year 2021. And this is a regular business meeting of the state and city council. Council is all present. Staff members will be introduced as they come on for presentations. And so we'll bang the desk, boom, and the meeting is called to order. And we're going to start with public comment. Alyssa, would you? Roll the camera?
Sure. First up, we have Jason Jordan, who will be popped on the screen here. Jason, you can go ahead and introduce yourself. And once you do that, I'll start the timer. We're getting some feedback from you, Jason.
How about now? Does that sound a little bit better?
That's a lot better.
Okay, perfect. All right, great. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jason Jordan. I serve as the general manager for Republic Services out of Woodburn. And I just wanted to let the council know that I'm here tonight just to speak on behalf of our company. And I know that there's questions and I know the conversation is around the franchise system. So I wanted to make sure that the council is aware that I'm here for anything that are questions that can arise. But briefly, from our point of view, the franchise system really is used by municipalities and jurisdictions throughout Oregon to grant the right to operate in exchange for a franchise fee, which is paid by, paid to the jurisdiction. And so for solid waste services, this franchise is granted exclusively in a, in a state's case. The franchise fee is five percent of the gross receipt. So I know as council reviewed with members of my staff, KJ Lewis and Will Mathias on the previous meeting, we could look at the financials where that was roughly about ninety-one thousand that we had paid in franchise fees in 2020. And really, the important part, though, is as you know, our business is capital intensive. I think it was mentioned that a typical truck for us is about three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand, just depending on the type. And we, we really take a lot of pride in making sure that we're following the guidelines of safe and good operating equipment. And also, the last time that we're talking about specifically rates, that the rates were reviewed and adjusted for state in 2016. And we just know that there's a lot that's changed from that point until today. And so, you know, with that, I think one thing that I wanted to share is as we looked at kind of a five-year walk back of the, the rate request that we had requested consideration for with council. That's an equivalent of about just over a two percent year over year if we march that back to when we reviewed those last in 2016. And so I know that I understand that there may be questions about the franchise system or even the franchise itself. And perhaps council would like to add or look at services and adjust part sizes. And I just want to make sure that we're happy to have a conversation with the city. But I just wanted to make sure that the city of State and the council is very well aware that we take a lot of pride in the service that we provide there. And wanted to make sure that it was just a consideration for the rate review. And then we're looking forward to council's direction for tonight. So thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. Okay, Alyssa, were there, are there any other public comments this evening?
Yes, Mayor. Next up, we have Josh Harvey from Republic Services.
Yes, good morning. Can everybody hear me? Or good evening, I should say.
You're welcome.
Yes, well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Josh Harvey. I'm the new operations manager for Woodburn Republic and Marion County. I'm the guy that kind of gets the boots on the ground, gets the guys going, gets into your city, gets you guys taken care of. So I was, I sat in on the last city council meeting and I heard some of your guys' compliments. Counselor Patty, your son, it's super excited when he sees the garbage truck driver. That's Dave Goble. He's one of our great drivers, super safe driver. Mary said our, our driver brings your dog a dog biscuit weekly. Our drivers take great pride in what they do out there. They, they like being the billboard for our company. They're the people you guys see every week, not me, not Jason, not KJ. So it's awesome that you guys provide that feedback. Once you know that every one of those drivers in our sports staff pay a living wage, we consider every one of our employees part of the family. As you start our presentation, we take care of our employees in hard times so they can take care of you and your constituents. We also take care of our trucks. Like Jason said, they're super expensive. They take a lot of upkeep. They take very skilled mechanics to keep them running cleanly and safely on your streets. But just as our drivers, you know, we take care of them so they can take care of you guys. Our local customer service staff is on help, is on hand to solve any problems or people may have. You guys only have five complaints in all of 2020. That is pretty awesome, considering how many opportunities we have to have a complaint or a positive reaction. So that's awesome to hear. And I saw on the presentation, disposal is the largest piece of the pie. It's one that we have the least amount of control over. It's controlled by Marion County and the burner. So what expenses we can control, the, the major one we cannot control. So like Jason said, times have changed since we're late last rate adjustment in 2016. So tonight, we asked you to consider directing staff to draft a resolution to adjust rates, which have not changed in five years. And again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh. Alyssa, anyone else?
Yes, we have one more. KJ Lewis from Republic.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm KJ Lewis, again, your municipal relationship manager for Republic Services of Woodburn. I presented our annual report and our request for a ten point three percent rate adjustment at your last council meeting. Just a reminder that our service is at your curb for your, your garbage and your yard waste every week and your recycling every other week. And it's still probably your lowest, lowest bill that you pay. Looking back to our last meeting, I've been asked questions from staff about the franchise and about service and community giving. The answers to those questions begin on page ninety-six of your packet, but I'd like to address some of them quickly and answer them here. The range of eight to twelve percent profitability with a target of ten percent is generally accepted throughout the state of Oregon for our industry. It's a way for jurisdictions to know that a company is not over profitable nor under profitable, but still remains viable. Marion County itself, like other counties, requires that haulers submit a COSA, a cost of service analysis annually. The county aggregates hauler's costs and when adjusting county rates aims for a ten percent target itself. As you know, as you have heard, this is a capital intensive industry and our fleet must be maintained. We also strive to hire the best people, which I think you can see from the way our drivers interact with your community. And we pay those best people a living wage. As Josh mentioned, our largest cost disposal is out of our hands and set by the county at the burner. I want to be clear that the data was presented, that was presented was state and specific and not county, state, nor company wide. Because of the aforementioned COSA, we're able to analyze costs on a city by city basis. And another thing, should our profitability exceed twelve percent, we would not be asking for rate adjustment. We intend to appear before council annually with our annual report. Should we find ourselves in an over profitable position, we can discuss remedies at the staff or the council level. And a reminder that it's been five years and maybe perhaps many of you weren't on council yet the last time we came before you. We have cut costs during the pandemic briefly. We balanced or reduced hours for employees where possible. We suspended travel and related expenses. We moved as much maintenance in-house as possible, performed reroutes where feasible. But let's be clear, we provide an essential service. We trimmed as much as possible during the pandemic, but we cannot stop providing the service to your customers, your constituents. And that there is a cost of the service. Quickly, I was asked about charitable giving. I just want council to know that we provide free service to several city-owned sites throughout the city with an annual cost of about twenty thousand dollars. This service is provided free of charge to the city and is in addition to the franchise fees, which last year totaled, as Jason said, ninety-one thousand dollars. It's quite a partnership that we have. On the charitable giving side, there's two funding streams, one at the local level and one at the charitable foundation level. The local level, we provide both funding and in-kind services, like I mentioned just a second ago. In the past, we provided funding for the High School Eagles Booster Club scholarship, three thousand dollars in 2021. In-kind services for the Santee MU Sports League, equivalent to six hundred dollars in 2021, and sponsorship of the Santeeum Stampede. We also provide in-kind services at the Leaf Hall. Please note, though, we cannot give if we're not asked. All requests are considered. We take our community giving and involvement very, very seriously. Swooping out, our National Charitable Foundation focuses on neighborhood revitalization. These are projects such as rebuilding a community garden, as we're doing in Portland this fall, or supporting Habitat for Humanity affordable housing projects, or fixing up a playground. If council or a community member is interested in discussing a project, please contact me. I hope we demonstrate that we're good and reliable partners. We really enjoy serving our community and interacting with their constituents. Tonight, we request that council direct staff to draft a resolution adjusting our rates as requested. And I remain available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alyssa, what else do you have in the way of comments?
That, that is it, Mayor. Those are all the public comments that we have for this evening.
I appreciate that. And then let's go to consent agenda for April nineteenth. It's been that long. So someone entertaining a motion to, okay. That consent agenda, please. Did someone offer a motion? How about that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor McDonald.
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty. I second that motion.
A motion and a second. Thank you, David. And no discussion. So Alyssa, would you pull the council on this one, please?
Sure. Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
I'm going to abstain. I wasn't at that meeting.
Okay. Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
And Counselor Patty?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes four to zero with one abstention.
Public hearings tonight. Under general business, we have a redesignation of the North Santiam Enterprise Zone. And it's an action item. The staff report, Mr. Fleishman, our planning director. So Dan, it is yours. Where, where be he? Where is he?
Unmuted.
There he is.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You may recall that a few months ago, we were discussing whether to redesignate the North Santiam Enterprise Zone. At that time, you authorized staff to move forward with it. And we have jumped through the necessary hoops, been in touch with the other taxing jurisdictions that would be impacted by this. They were invited to attend the meeting. Actually, they received two invitations to attend the meeting because the first one went out without the adequate state required twenty-one days prior to the meeting. The, the Marion Soil and Water Conservation District attended the first meeting and nobody else replied to either that invitation or the second invitation for the one with the required notice. You've got before you a resolution that would authorize staff to submit the application and designate the city of State and as the sponsor of the enterprise zone. Should you proceed or authorize staff to proceed, we will, the, the enterprise zone provides a partial property tax exemption for new, new investment in industrial property that results in job creation. And it is one of the very few incentives that the city has to provide to industrial businesses for expansion or new plant and job creation in the city. We've had the enterprise zone for ten years. There's been three applications that have been approved, only one of which actually resulted in both the investment and the necessary job creation to receive the three-year exemption from assessment on the new investment. So with that, the staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution as presented. But I am available to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, Dan. Under discussion, folks. What do we think of this one? Everyone had a chance to look at resolution ten twenty-one?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead. Counselor Hook?
If there is no one that has any questions, I'd like to offer a motion.
Okay, certainly.
I'd like to move to adopt resolution ten twenty-one as presented and direct staff to complete the redesignation process.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty. I would second that motion.
All right. Okay, a motion and a second then to move, adopt the resolution of ten twenty-one as presented and direct staff to complete the redesignation process. Okay. Any discussion, please? If not, then Alyssa, would you pull the council on this one, please?
Sure. Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
And Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
The, and thank you, Dan. The next thing is an informational one, a manufactured growing park toolkit. This, this was interesting to read through. I hope all of you found it interesting. Mr. Fleishman, would you go ahead and take us through this, please?
Certainly. I, I, I won't spend a whole lot of time going through the toolkit or playbook, as I've called it here. But you, council may recall that back in October, we had a discussion about the, the three manufactured home communities or mobile home parks that are in the city. The extent to which the city has the authority to take various actions to help preserve them. You may recall that at that time, staff presented to you the, the requirements of state law upon the owners of parks regarding their obligation to their tenants, should they choose to close the park. And also the limitations in state law on the city ability to go above and beyond what the state requirements are. And essentially, the city, state law says the city of State and can't do anything above and beyond that. We also talked about some land use code provisions, zoning restrictions. But the direction that council gave staff was to pursue this playbook toolkit so that should there be any threat to the future of the mobile home parks, the city is in a position to, to react and to provide assistance to the residents of the park. In doing so, I have reached out to the owners of each of the parks, had a phone conversation with them, feel relatively confident at this point, based on those conversations, that there's probably very little threat to the future of the parks at this time. Two, all, all three of the parks are owned by, by people or, or business entities that are in the manufactured housing park business. The, the, the State and Trailer Court on West Washington Street is, is sort of a mom and pop operation, so to speak. But the owner said that they intend, that they're in it for the long haul. He, he and his wife intend to, to transfer ownership to their, their children, adult children, and that they, who have been involved in the management of the parks. So they're intimately familiar with the parks and how to run them. And the other two owners also said that they, you know, again, they're in it for the long haul. In, in the document is a, a list of contact information for various housing and social service and other governmental agencies that can provide assistance should there be the need for it. With, again, with, with phone numbers and contact information and sort of an action plan for steps that the city would take should this eventuality come in place. As I said in my, my cover staff report, I think that probably the most challenging thing before us is to make sure that whoever is here as staff in five, ten, fifteen, or twenty years knows that this document is, is available. And somehow memorializing that so that, so that staff knows it's here. And, and again, every five or so years, we should, we should be pulling it out, updating it, making phone calls, making sure there hasn't been a change in, in the status quo. So that's what I've got for you tonight. Again, this is just informational. No action is needed on your behalf. This will get not just put on the bookshelf literally, but, but we'll make sure that there's, there's something that, that so that staff in the future know that this document is available and what steps to take should need be. With that, I'm available to answer any questions the council may have.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Let's open it up for discussion. Go ahead, anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Hook, please.
This is Counselor Hook. I just, there was a lot of information, which I really appreciated, of course. But I just wanted to be clear because there was a lot of like repetitive things and it kind of got into some legal ease that wasn't so clear to me. That once there's noted, if there was to be notice given, that they were planning to sell one of these, that they would not be required to remove their home, that they could just take whatever the, the payment was between six thousand and, and ten thousand dollars. I'm just, I guess my, I'm just wanting to make sure that they wouldn't have to use that to move a home where they didn't have a place to move it to. But it sounds like they could just leave the home there if it was to sell and, and there could be no penalty given to them. But I, I just wasn't sure on that.
As I understand the statute, and I'll have to say, I've only read through it once or twice. It's not something that I work with on a regular basis by any means. First of all, I need to make a distinction between the requirement for a park owner to provide notice of the intent to sell, which is what I heard you say, Counselor Hook. That notice needs to be provided to both the owners and to the Oregon Department of Housing and Community Services. And, and to distinguish that from the intent to close the park. So should the owners want to sell and they find a buyer who will keep the park open, then there is no, as I understand it, there is no requirement for a payment to the tenants. I mean, they'll just, they'll be writing their rent checks to a new entity. So the, the, the six to ten thousand dollars posters state tax credits available. My understanding is should the park be closing and they need to remove their unit because of that, that is to reimburse them for the costs of doing so. But also, like you said, Counselor Hook, when, if they abandoned their, their, their home and leave the park, there's provisions in here that essentially, as I understand them, the park owner obtains possession of the unit and there is no penalty to the, to the, the tenant who, who left it there. And they can't, the, the park owner can't go back and, and assess disposal costs or, or something like that. That's my reading of that statute.
But they would, the, the owner that potentially was to abandon their unit would still receive the payment of the six thousand to ten thousand.
That's, that's my understanding of the statute.
That's my understanding.
If I'm a park owner and I decide to close the park, I am obligated to provide that payment to each tenant. And, and the six to ten depends on the size of the unit.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you. That was, if you, if that's your understanding, and that's my understanding, it sounds like that's probably what it's saying.
Right.
Other questions? Dan, one, I don't know that this is necessarily troubling. Maybe, maybe it is. The idea that maintaining the status quo, is that, is that really all we're interested in? Not maybe as far as buying and selling the parks, but are there any suggestion that we as a community can ask that these things, these areas, these very necessary living areas be upgraded, modernized a little bit from time to time?
I, I don't know whether we've got the authority or the ability to, to require that. The, the, the State and Trailer Court on West Washington Street is the obvious example of a facility that probably could use that. It is, as I called it, is a legacy development. It existed well before there were any land use regulations or requirements. I wouldn't be surprised if it was existed prior to any requirement for state licensing or, or, or whatever. So we, we just, it, it's there as a, as a, it's not a non-conforming use as the use is permitted in that zone, but it is clearly a non-conforming development in that it does not meet any of the design or construction standards. But I don't, as such, under the land use code, it is allowed to continue. The one provision we have put in the code that, that would have a substantial impact there and probably, and may have an impact on some spaces in the Oaks Mobile Home Park is we have said that any new unit being moved in needs to be installed according to the state's manufactured housing code. They need to get a building permit. And in both of those two parks, there are a number of existing units that today are recreational vehicles or maybe even an old school bus that's been converted into something to live in. So, so when those finally reach the point that they need to be replaced, they'll need to be replaced with a full-blown manufactured housing unit. And, and, you know, get a building permit and get it properly installed according to the state's manufactured housing code. But that doesn't, that doesn't address perhaps inadequate water systems or sewer systems or landscaping. or landscaping or the separation between units. Uh, in the case of the State Trailer Court, it would probably be very difficult in some of those spaces to put even a, a modern single-wide unit in.
Okay, thank you. Um, Sandy and I have a certain amount of nostalgia for that place, having moved into it in the summer of nineteen sixty-eight, fifty-three years ago. And uh at that time, Staton as a town didn't have much rental property. And so this was one of the only options for us as I took a job here. Um, it was an okay place to live for two or three years. There one interesting, strange kind of requirement was that you could have pets, but not children. So when we had our first baby in nineteen seventy, we uh were forced to buy a house. And that, but, you know, it was, it was a place to live. And uh those places are needed and we probably need more of them. But anyway, that's me. Uh, somebody else, any of the rest of you? So what to do with this? This is a discussion, Adam.
Yeah, just informational, so no action is needed.
Okay, all right. Manufactured loan toolkit, any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Hook.
Um, this is Counselor Hook. I just wanted to thank you so much, Dan, for all the work that you put into that toolkit. I read through that thoroughly and I feel, personally, I feel very good about um us having that, that plan and it, it being out there for the public to be able to see that, that we are looking out for our residents um in the event that something did happen. Because, you know, this is something that has happened all over Oregon, parks closing. And it's, it's great to know that, you know, we made con- that you made contact with those um property owners, um, just to kind of let people be able to rest easier, knowing that um that's not going to probably be happening here in Staton. So thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. A- a- and I will note that um I think all, all three of them were surprised to hear from me, were appreciative to hear from me, uh, were very willing to have that discussion that, that we had. Um, and one, and I can't remember which one uh to address uh the mayor's comments or questions. Um, did talk about that they have some quote upgrades planned for the park. Um, and um, and one uh expressed his appreciation for the relationship he has with the city. Uh, I guess uh they pay the city a, a fee uh for the street sweeper to go through and take care of their private streets. So he was very appreciative of that. I wasn't aware of that arrangement um prior, prior to hearing that. So I think it, it was good to make that contact and it will be, it will be good for staff in the future to, to, to do that on a periodic basis with them.
Dan, one last thought uh on that next door to the mobile home park on um West Washington is at one time a very common uh thing called an A and W uh drive-up restaurant. And now that one's still there, uh, you know, fifty, sixty years later. Um, and kind of a, still a great place to eat. Um, but the drive-in thing is, is unusual for A and Ws now, apparently. People come from far and wide to eat there once and the, the uh drive-up service. Not around the bend and ordering through the microphone, but uh to park and have s- somebody come out and take their order and bring you a hamburger. Anyway. Thank you again, good job. Okay, uh, let's go on then, if, well, there's nothing else on that. Um, it's a lot to read and I believe that um the reason the state got involved in this was the, the number of, of uh mobile home parks that were closed, or closing uh because the land was more valuable and a bunch of people displaced. And that's why the state got involved in that some years ago. I don't know exactly when, but I remember it. Uh, let's go on to solid waste franchise agreement. Mr. Campbell.
Oh.
Sorry. What is a franchise agreement?
I'm, I'm, I'm here, Mr. Rick. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and City Council. Uh, before we, oh, jumped ahead there. Before we get started tonight, I, I do want to say, it's not part of my staff report, but um I am not an expert on franchise agreements. Uh, so what I did is I worked with our city attorney's office, LG. LG is our attorney. Um, our regular attorney is not an expert in franchise agreements either. So uh they have an individual who specializes in franchise agreements, um, who worked with me uh to, to seek some clarifying information and to provide advice on this. So um just wanted to acknowledge um the work that went into with, with that. And uh just want to give a brief synopsis of the staff report. This isn't, isn't meant to be all encompassing, but just kind of talking about some, some broad generalities and some things uh as part of this discussion. So I think the, the first important thing is kind of what is a franchise agreement? And this sort of lays out right here. Um, it's a contract between municipality and a ser- service provider that grants the right to serve customers in the city's jurisdiction. Um, a contract often specifies a period of service and a fee remitting back to the municipality. So um in the case of, of our solid waste franchise, it's at five percent that, that we've heard and, and has been discussed. In return, the city is able to set a standard of service to recoup the cost. Um, and that, that is also to cover the cost of the use of the right-of-way by the franchisee. So for them to be able to come in uh with solid waste, what you look at a lot of times is the large trucks, the wear and tear of things of that nature. So here are a, a list of our current uh franchise agreements that we have. Um, solid waste, natural gas, power, and then, and cable and broadband. Um, this is the only uh franchise agreement that is an exclusive uh agreement that we have with current franchises. So, you know, when you start diving into the history and we thought it was worthwhile of sort of doing, you know, what brought us to this point, if you will. Uh, the first solid waste franchise was established August third of nineteen seventy with ordinance three ninety-five. Um, we went ahead and provided a list of the documents, just kind of detailing the history going forward, um, including that franchise fee rate, resolution six eighty-two, um, just to show kind of the progression um of how we reached this point and, and when franchise, solid waste franchise agreements uh began in the city of, of State. So when we talk about the stated purpose of, of solid waste franchise, and this was part of, of again, information that was in the memorandum. But you, these are the, the arguments that have been made and are part of the documents um going back, talking about why a franchise is needed and what the purpose and intent of a solid waste franchise agreement is. So overall, this would be looking at, are we accomplishing these goals and objectives? Um, yeah, this, it is basically A through G, if you will, of, of standards. We have established our municipal code, or we've established our franchise agreement with solid waste in our municipal code. And so it was established in January twenty-second of two thousand and seven. It's in Title Four Franchises and it's chapter four point oh eight. Our agreement is exclusive agreement, so it allows for the entity that's part of, of the codification to have an exclusive rights. The city can terminate without cause. Um, if terminated, the agreement will stay in place for five years. It is a five-year agreement which renews annually. It's a perpetual agreement. So essentially every year, it, it renews at the first of the year for an additional five years. So most of the franchises that I've dealt with in the past have been done via a negotiated agreement. Um, some cities are moving to a right-of-way ordinance, which is an idea we've explored here as well. But I was curious about this and, and did some research. So just to let everyone know, a codified agreement is uncommon for franchise agreements, but not uncommon for solid waste agreements in Oregon. Uh, same thing with the term. Uh, most terms of franchise agreements are a ten-year contract renewed. Um, this one is a five-year rolling agreement, which again, uncommon for traditional franchise agreements, but not uncommon for solid waste agreements in Oregon from, from the information and data I've received. So Republic Services asked for a rate increase of the, the ten point three percent. Our code actually, our municipal code actually sets out in section four point oh eight oh three oh one B, what we should look at from a city's point of view or what the council should look at when considering a request for a rate increase. So went ahead and just kind of listed them all here, um, also in the, the document we have as well. And here's, here's the rest of them listed out. So one of the things that we did in the conversations through ten, one of the things we did in the conversations is we did uh reach out and use some of these and also questions that I had been asked and questions that came up. And uh we asked Republic Service for a list of questions regarding the rate increase. Um, that information is provided in the packet. I did not want to go through and um discuss those individually because we asked the questions, their information is there, so we felt that was sufficient to, to address the question staff had, and asked, and then the answers that Republic Service provide. Um, and all those are in the, in the council part, council packet. So with this, I mean, basically we see three next steps. We can have the, review the rate increase request from Public Service and the franchise agreement. Um, the clarify material that was provided in, in section four, so State, State and Municipal Code four point oh eight oh three oh, and the additional follow-up questions for Public Services and take no further action. Um, you can ask staff or Public Services for more information or for clarification regards to the franchise agreement or for additional information regarding the rate increase or just direct us feeling this is enough information uh to prayer resolution for the request of the ten point three percent for Public Services. So there's more information in the staff memo, but this is kind of the basics. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions uh you have and um assist in any way that I can. So I'll open up for questions.
Go ahead, folks.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Hook.
Yeah, this is Counselor Hook. Um, Keith, I, I appreciated all of the information. I skimmed some of the older documents to kind of just see um that.
A lot there, yeah.
A lot, yeah. Um, to kind of see what the, what, what the past history was of it. But um I also um was just, I'm really taken aback by the, the number of ten point three percent. Um, and I decided to look at some other cities around Oregon. And I don't know if anyone else has kind of looked this up, but I was seeing that Republic, Republic Services had um only gotten three point one percent from Tuolatin in May of twenty twenty, Pleasant Hill, two point three two percent in spring of twenty nineteen, and it was only for a year. Polk County, two point five percent in twenty nineteen. Millersburg, uh, Millersburg, two point four percent for twenty twenty. And then the year prior to that, or the, the time prior to that was five point seven percent. Um, Salem, when they did their rate increases, I think they used a different company, but um Polk, their Polk County side had a five point five percent increase and a three percent increase um for the Marion County side um in both twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty. Um, SIO was asked for no rate increase whatsoever from Republic Services for twenty twenty-one. Um, Almsville was asked for fifteen point six percent increase. Benton County, um, two point nine percent. Um, so I'm just, I'm really taken aback by the number, the, the percentage of increase. Um, we are in a really hard economic time right now. And that is a huge increase um for our residents here. So I guess I don't really have a question other than, what, yeah, I do. What, what, what do you think about um a ten point three percent increase? Is there a staff recommendation um for this based on your guys' experience?
Well, well, I think, you know, what we tried to do in some of the questions was to, to, to ask some of the questions that were there. You know, one of the questions we asked was comparable services to others. And, and Woodburn and Silverton were the examples that were, that were used, that were provided back by, by um, by Republic Services. I mean, maybe what would be a good follow-up question is just a more detailed analysis of, not necessarily, I'm not trying, you know, cherry picking, if you will, or picking a couple, but really looking at a broader area or getting more of clarification why there seems to be such a discrepancy um in terms of, of the different rate ask in, in different areas, um, especially in terms of that. We did try to drill down to really get into, you know, specifically, the presentation, I think, was a, was a broader presentation, but, you know, we were looking at it more from, you know, what was the city of state and what specifically, you know, was, was germane to us to give us more information about us specifically. So some of the questions were there. We just, we gave the answers that Republic Service gave. Um, but I think that would be a legitimate question. Uh, we did ask the question, um, and this was sincerely just my question, which is during the pandemic, you know, what, what efforts have been done? And their, their answers are, are provided in there as well. It's, it's a tough time for such a big ask, I, I agree.
Keith, uh, quick question is. Uh, bottom line, not bottom line, but isn't the, the reason for the rate increase this five-year period that they haven't asked for one? Not since sixteen or seventeen, sixty?
Uh, I, I, I think that's, that's, I mean, obviously what they, you know, they, they've said its last time was in, in sixteen. I, I think more than just how long it's been, it's, it's just more of looking, to me, it's more looking at the economics of it, right? Um, and not just in a, in a timeframe, but actual um, a, a need, i- if you will. But, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, that's one of the points. It has been since sixteen, so, you know, they feel like it's been five years. But, but again, I can only speak to what they're asking for. And, and the timeframe since the last time. And, and, you know, they, they are right, the burner issue was an issue at that timeframe that was, you know, pretty significant. Uh, that's, that's an ongoing county issue and um long-term for solid waste removal, I think that's going to be a challenge we're going to have in this area going forward.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yeah, Keith, you know, I am kind of with Counselor Hook on this. That seems like a lot. That is a huge increase to ask of our constituents, especially now. Um, but, you know, I, I did review the material and I do see that, you know, fuel costs going up forty percent for them, that's going to be a huge cut into uh the, the amount of money that they're able to uh spend, uh, especially with their operating costs. So I was kind of thinking that maybe there was some other things that perhaps Republic wasn't meeting our community's needs on, that we could perhaps ask for improving the franchise agreement. One example that kind of came up in my discussions with folks is people really want a bigger yard debris bin, that's something I've heard consistently. So if anybody else heard something else from constituents that maybe we could put as an ask and also get Counselor Hook's question answered about these other communities, maybe that's a good jumping off point, just a suggestion.
Yeah, Counselor Patty, I, I will jump in and say, I, I have heard the same thing from constituents that you have, so I, I will agree, that's a concern that I've heard from, from multiple people as, as well. And, and just, I think sometimes, you know, there's some confusion just because different cities have different requirements or different sizes, right? So maybe to get more informa- clarifying information on, on some of that. It did sound like in Republic Services comments um to the council prior to this that they, they were, they were open for discussions. Um, you know, with that, if, if the council wanted to look at maybe, you know, discussing some options with, with our current franchise, um, I would advise that we, we do engage our city attorney to assist with those conversations. Um, uh, you know, humbly, that's outside of my pay grade, um, and, and really needs to be somebody who specializes in that. So I think that's, that's a conversation we can definitely engage our attorney to have with them as well and to, to look at that specifically of, of maybe some, some additional um benefits to our, to our residents.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Robert.
Um, I was looking at the different options for promotions and whatnot. Um, is it possible to have a public hearing before we even decide if we want to do a resolution? Or do we need to decide on the resolution first?
No, I think that would fall kind of under option number two, which is to, to ask for more information, maybe, you know, seek, seek some of this out. Um, you know, I think I'd want to work with council and with our city attorney to make sure that we, we cover kind of a broad range. Invite Republic Service to be in here, maybe just answer some of these questions directly, but to give them an opportunity as well to have the information prepared and ready to go, right? So they could come forward with the information that would be, be best suited to, to giving the council the information they need to make an informed decision.
Awesome. I, uh, follow-up, Mr. Mayor, um, to Counselor Patty's point, to just get that. I follow up, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Patty's point, to just get that involvement from the community to see what, if any other needs, if this is an opportunity to possibly get those met as well while we're talking about increasing rates, that would be of interest to me.
Okay, good, thank you. Other questions, thoughts?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Councilor Hook here. I would also be curious about, and it probably said somewhere, and it's just not, I'm not finding it right now again, what is the, like, per billing cycle increase going to look on average for people? Like, what's that increase going to look like for their monthly statement? I was trying to, I feel like it was given to us, but I can't find it.
Well, Councilor Hook, I pay about $75, so my increase would be, I mean, that's 750, that'd be a 750 increase. So that's for two months.
So I guess I'll say Republic Service did provide, and it's in the packet, you know, a sheet here listing kind of residential rates, commercial rates. So I think you could look at that and see, you know, depending on what kind of service someone has, you know, what kind of rate increase they could have in that as well. So I think it's there, it would just be, you know, multiplying it by 1.10, obviously, to get with the new rate.
Okay, thank you.
About $75 for a couple of months?
That's the last page of the packet, Councilor Hook.
Here it is, okay, yeah. Works out at home here to about $75 for a two-month period. According to the resident bookkeeper.
Yeah, I think some of that would just vary depending on the services, but I think that's, if a two-month period, so you're looking at about, you know, what, 375 a month for the mayor, that, you know, in that example. But varies just depending on those rates that were provided by Republic Services. So if I'm, just to kind of sum up, it seems like what I'm hearing here is the council would like to, you know, based off some of the feedback we've received on this, I will be meeting with Republic Services later this week. I'm sure they're watching right now, just to get some clarifying questions, do a public hearing essentially, trying to get this information ready to go. I'll work with them, just the timelines that they'll have, so they're not rushed on this, and then we'll get this back on the agenda as soon as we can. Does that sound like what everyone would agree would be the right, right? I'm not making any assumptions, I'm saying that's what I'm hearing, is that correct?
That's what I would like, yes.
Same here.
All right. Chris, Councilor Moen, what do you think of that?
Agreed, agreed.
Mr. McDonald. Councilor McDonald.
No, sorry, I'm on board.
And David, you weighed in on it, I think?
Yep.
Okay, so let's do that. Keith, we're going to talk to Republic Services and we'll get some more information.
Yeah, we'll take the feedback from this. I'll follow up just to see if there's any additional clarifying questions we need to ask, and then have the conversation with them, and I'll let you know when we're going to have it back on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Great. Okay, we're done with that. Communication from city staff?
Yeah, I didn't figure I'd need to leave. So I think one of the things that we want to say from staff point of view is tomorrow is election day for our local levies. The deadline to drop off your ballots are 8:00 PM. We have the drop box available 24 hours a day, essentially, so you can drive in after this meeting if you need to and drop it off. The drop location is north, the north part of the library here, and the community center pool, a library parking lot. So you can always drop your ballot off at the election office as well in Salem. Just make sure they're in those drop boxes by 8:00 PM tomorrow.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Keith. Anything else from the staff, other than welcome back to Susanna?
We're happy to have Susanna back. She's as feisty as ever, so I know she's feeling well. So we're excited to have her back. As you can hop on to.
Thank you, it is very nice to be back. Appreciate it.
We can now find out what's going on in Sweet Home once in a while.
Today it was good weather.
I never heard anything about that town unless I'm talking to you. Communications from mayor and council, I don't have anything else this evening. Does anyone else have anything?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilor Patty. I just want to encourage everybody out there, vote for these levies. If you want state to be livable, please vote for these levies. Thank you.
It becomes part of what we want this community to look like. It's an ongoing effort, as we all know, we know. Let's hope that enough people out there know and appreciate it. Yeah, yeah. Lots of good signs out there. It feels like a positive effort. I hope everyone feels that. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Councilor Or, I have, this is kind of for Susanna, just kind of as a heads up, I had someone ask me some questions, and you don't have to answer this now, this is for budget committee stuff. So just when we are, if you aren't already going to kind of give a brief overview, but just an explanation on how the different, not accounts, but how the different.
Funds?
Funds, how the different funds work and how the general fund works. If you could just kind of give like a brief overview of that for all of us, kind of, I mean, I know this is what, our third one, but, you know, just as a refresher, and then also, like I said, I have, I've had several community members ask me how the different funds work. Can you use funds from, you know, from one fund to do a different project that isn't part of that fund and vice versa? So are we allowed to like move, again, you don't have to answer this, but are we allowed to move money around, you know, if we need, you know, to fix this over here, if it doesn't fit into that fund? I'm trying to stay general, so you can answer that.
Basically, you would like me to kind of go through the basic Oregon budget law, what the rules are for each fund and the type of funding that is for that fund and how it's restricted to the funds.
You don't have to get like into the details, but just kind of explain there, Oregon law says that we have different funds, we can only use, if we have a street fund, we can only use them for streets, we can't use them for, that's just the one off the top of my head, we can't use it for police cars or something like that, just because I've had a couple people ask me, ask me that, so.
Okay. I think we can definitely make sure we cover that in the budget, you know, specifically. We do have something in our budget, and I was just bringing it up, and it's starting on 15, that kind of breaks down and talks about it too as well, like what the funds are. But I think what we really need to do, because to Councilor Or's point, you know, I've had some same, some questions before, not understanding, you know, how certain funds are encumbered or limited. Oregon law is really strict on where monies can and can't go, and, you know, how we have. So I think just making sure people understand why we can't use street fund dollars, for instance, for the pool, or, you know, the hypothetical, right? Because the street fund money, it comes from gasoline tax and sale, from the state and from our local gas tax, and also from the transportation fee we have, so those monies have to be spent on that. Same thing with SDCs have a limitation on where they can be spent as well. So I think what we can definitely do, I mean, it's in our budget, but I think highlighting some of these things and making sure people really have an understanding of how that budgetary breakdown works is a great question and something we'll work on doing. And I know Susanna can cover this and make it seem way simpler than I could, so I'll put it on her to explain it in layman's terms.
Yeah, and as you guys are reading through the budget book, and as the committee's reading through, that fund accounting part of the budget really does talk about each fund and the rules as well, so then you guys will have a pre, before I give those, that part of the beginning of the budget meeting on the 24th. That will help.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then I just.
I add something every time as a refresh, so this will be a nice one.
Yeah. And then I just want to encourage, I said this to some community members that reach out to me, I want to encourage you to try to read that information, what page did you say? Page 15? Keith, I know, I don't expect you to understand it because I didn't understand most of it that I got on here, but then you can reach out with some questions too, because Susanna is very willing to answer those.
Oh, totally.
Yeah, yeah, I would say reach out to anyone in staff, we can definitely try to do that. So yeah, page 15, it goes through each of the funds and sort of talks about, you know, what, where the money comes from and, you know, how it's funded. So I think that's a, like a helpful way of looking at that. And so, like the street fund, you know, briefly says, "The street fund provides the accounting of the city's streets, bike lanes, and right-of-way activities. Funding sources include the local gas tax and state highway gas tax, street fees, and grants, funding from various sources." And it goes on to a little more detail, so just kind of explains in each of those areas. And then understanding, of course, where money's sort of encumbered to, if you will, or limited, is just really important to understanding how the budget works and also the limitations we have sometimes on money. You know, why we could have a healthy fund here and maybe a fund that's not doing so well someplace else, because, you know, how the revenue streams are. So all that's just great information, and the more we can share and hopefully make it more transparent and understandable, the better for everybody in the community.
Yeah, and as everyone's going through that, if they think of something else they would like help with clarification, to reach out to Keith or me and let me know, I can add that to my presentation as well to help.
Of course, it's a great idea. Yeah, if you have something else you want us to cover in more detail or clarifying, please, like I say, clarifying questions, if you have clarifying questions, please ask them, we'll be happy to emphasize those as well.
Keith, would it possibly help if we had a small, like a booklet that explained? Well. No, just, just to answer for Or's question of what these funds, what you can do with them, that things a person could pass out and say, here, this is how it works.
I think one of the things that's come out, especially in these levies, and we've had a lot of staff discussions, you know, there's some additions to this budget, the breakdown of the dollar bill of where your tax dollar goes, you know, things like that that we're learning. But I think, you know, it's really highlighted, we might just need to spend more time with the community or even on our online materials, just providing information to people to have them understand how their property tax works, where the property tax dollars go. You know, it's just some of these functions, you know, I can't tell you often I speak to somebody in the community, and even friends of mine, close friends of mine, who think that every tax dollar from their property tax goes to the city they live in. And so there's always a surprise in sort of how that works. So I think there's educational components out there so people can become better informed, just understand where their tax dollars are going and how local government works. And the more we can remove those barriers, I think that the richer the conversations we can have and the more trust we can build in the community. So I think that's, I think that's coming up, you know, we have this book here trying to do that, but I think what we talk, I talk about my budget message, and something that we're working on all the time is how do we help adapt the message? How do we make sure that everybody in the community can have an understanding, accessibility? And how do we make sure people feel comfortable reaching out and asking these questions? They don't live and breathe these things. Government can be, you know, sort of overwhelming sometimes in all of this, but the more we can break down and help, I think the better, and the better we're going to be in terms of engagement with our community as well.
Agree. I hope we all agree, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Councilor Hook.
This is Councilor Hook. Can we just remind the community of where they can find the proposed budget for this year online after this meeting?
Hold on, I must move.
Melissa, show, you want to share the screen and show more time?
I would, but it is not uploaded yet. It will be uploaded after the meeting here tonight, but it will be on the city's website. If you go to stateinoregon.gov, and there is a tab for departments, and under there is finance and budgets, and it will be on that page to download.
Also, we have the history of our previous budgets.
And it has all the previous, like, lots and lots of years of previous budgets are out there also.
Awesome, so that'll be there after this meeting, if they want to go and look, they can.
Yeah, give me a little bit of time, but yes, once we are signed off, I will be getting it up there.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Okay, is that it for this evening? Anything else? If not, let's go home, it's past 8:00. Productive meeting, lots of information tonight, and so let's go ahead and adjourn, and we'll do this again, what, next week? I think we've got a meeting, what's that next meeting? 20, hmm, it's in there somewhere.
It's the 24th, Mayor, at 6:00 PM.
24th, which is, this is the, yeah, so that must be Monday. But we will, that'll be budget meetings for it. Council Patty, that's our first of our three budget meetings?
You know it.
Okay.
Can't wait.
Boom, 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 all right. Thank you, folks, good night, take care.